Motion to start the meeting.
Second.
Member Meneno?
Yes.
Member Torres?
Yes.
Member Dubravsky?
Yes.
Member McRae?
Yes.
Chair Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. Alright, so everybody, welcome to Village of Pittsburgh Historic Preservation Board Meeting Tuesday, August 5th. Is a special agenda for a couple of applications that we needed a little bit more time on from our original July meeting. Two applicants tonight, one Durham Way and forty-five Monroe Ave. Does anyone have any reasons to recuse themselves from either applicant or application rather?
No.
No.
No. Okay, we're good. So, let's start with one Durham Way for the decking. So, just because I was asked, I have to disclose that I reached out to Fran Stern as the Historic Site Restoration Coordinator. That's who she is and that's her title at the statewide. Where is she? Oh yeah, she's at the New York. You got a huge signature. She's at the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation and Historic Preservation. So she asked me to disclose that I did reach out to her. I forwarded this to everyone this morning. If I was supposed to forward it to you, I apologize, but I could read it off if you want me to. Did everyone else get it and have a chance to read it? Alexander, what do you want me to do? Do you want me to read this?
It will part in minutes.
Okay.
You know, I guess what you want to share for the discussion, if I guys may make some information.
Okay. I think out of just fairness, I think it's nice for the applicant to know.
Especially pertinent aspects.
Yeah. Okay, so I'll read it off. Thank you. It's only two pages, it's not that long. Thank you for the question. We have seen several material used and we have seen this material used in preservation districts, but also in historic homeownership rehabilitation and tax credit programs referring to TimberTech. Alternative materials for decking and porches are steadily becoming very popular. However, the answer to the question of should this material be used in a locally regulated historic district really depends on the community, the nature of the project, and the ordinance. And I'm going to read this, but I want you to know that it there's it's just a lot of really good information for everybody. So this isn't like me, like giving you your answer.
Yeah, it was looking for precedent going forward too.
Exactly. So Pittsburgh's ordinance specifically states that the applicant, application for certificates of appropriateness shall be evaluated using this Secretary of the Interior standards for rehabilitation, end quote, and any regulation adopted by the Village of Pittsburgh's Boards of Trustees for historic preservation purposes. The Secretary of the Interior standards for rehabilitation state that the deteriorated materials shall be repaired and if replacement is deemed necessary, they should be replaced in kind. But the caveat is that the same standard actually says where replacement of a distinctive feature is necessary, the new feature must match the old in composition, design, color, texture, and visual properties. The key word there for you guys is distinctive feature. The NPS therefore recognizes that there should be an inherent flexibility in interpretation of the standards. And thus, the other document we reference quite a bit these days is Historic Preservation Brief Number Sixteen attached, which you'll also put in the meeting minutes. This document offers some explanation on how to interpret substitute materials and the standards. And it offers what I like to think of as a formula for when the usage of substitute materials may be appropriate. In this case, the deck proposal for one Durham Way seems to meet a couple of different criteria. Replacement of a secondary feature. The deck is visible from the rear of the house if the folks are using the canal trail, but is definitely a secondary nonhistoric feature of the home. Code, this is another bullet point. Code required performance. This may not be strictly an issue, but you can make an argument that the material like TimberTech offers more safety grip than potentially slippery pressure treated wood. Third bullet point, enhanced resilience and sustainability, performance of the material over time, et cetera. I'm not going to read that one. And then the fourth bullet point is matching the appearance of historic material. TimberTech specifically designed to look similar to wood. It's not a perfect match, but you can tell where the intent is. The preservation brief specifically, excuse me, the preservation brief does have a specific section that unpacks the concept of substitute material decking in greater specificity that you might find useful towards the end of the document. If you do, if you also look at the criteria for issuing a C of A contained in your ordinance, there are a couple of things to consider as well. And specifically note criteria G, the importance of the importance of historic, physical, and visual features, the significance of the property. The application does state that this deck is nonhistoric and a secondary feature. Should be noted that just because you may have a situation where the alternative material is approved in a local preservation district, it does not necessarily set precedent going forward because every C of A application must be evaluated on a case-by-case basis using all of the relevant information available. You may see some proposals for alternative decking material in the future that simply do not meet the criteria outlined in the ordinance of the standards slash preservation brief. It's about being consistent in how you apply the regulations across the board. I hope this helps a bit. Please let me know if you have any additional questions and please disclose this correspondence prior to the start of your application review at tonight's meeting to remain compliant with the NYS open meeting laws. So that's the reading I read that. And it's basically a lot of good information and helpful information. So I don't want to sound like that was coming from me. That's coming from Fran and we'll put that into the meeting minutes. So thank you.
So in a general sense, which I previously discussed was the fact that I think absolutely it is a low visibility, non-historically relevant deck and for those purposes, it is perfectly reasonable. But for other applicants in the future, especially on more visible or material consistency, my only caveat that I'm concerned about this particular material is the non-paintability of it. But as far as this application goes, personally, I have no problem with approving.
So the only reason that we are talking about this deck is because it's visible. If it was not visible, we would not have any sale. It's completely visible from the canal.
That's right.
So.
The side of it, but the top of it where the material will be is.
So because of your house, it's a shed house of the nineteen seventies. The problem generally in houses that are older, the detail of the decking, how it comes out, how it looks from the front has been a thing that is kind of part of the period and the way they build decks. There's no fashion. So the wonderful thing about, you know, you're proposing a material that is not generally approved for houses of the eighteen hundreds because it is, it's generally their wood. You have a shed house from the seventies and what you have there right now is not historically appropriate. It's an addition or whoever put that, you know, it has a lattice that is probably made, okay. So whatever you do is going to, and you know, from the historic perspective, is going to enhance what you have there anyway. So that's, that's from my point of view, very good. There are decks in that period are very simple and they are very like, instead of vertical, they are very horizontal. Kind of the, this, this, this first railing is super thick and long generally. And if you have been to Bristol, you know, the decking of Bristol, kind of that is the look of that house and shape. Not that you're going to Bristol there. So I don't think it's so inappropriate to use a material as the look of the deck. So that's what I think in my opinion should be on the table for discussion.
Did you see the railing presented, the horizontal railing?
With the metal?
This supports, it's a cor- according, a kind of a.
Yeah, but it's vertical.
There are the vertical stainless cables where they have metal top and bottom.
There we go.
Bill, so.
Oh, it is vertical.
Yeah, I know it is, but it has a strong piece across the top.
Exactly.
So it's a horizontal band.
It could, yeah. So I, I'm just stating what I see. So yes, I saw it. So what I'm saying is the point would be to discuss the looks and you know, I don't know, I, I if this is the look, I don't know exactly what's the vertical materials in between.
It's cable.
Cable, yeah.
So and they plan to not have a skirting, right? It's they're, they're going to keep the bottom open. Where the lattice is, that will be open.
So I don't know if the metal is the most appropriate for the shed house of the nineteen seventies, which is kind of part of, so, but remember I'm a vote, so that is my, my take. That those cables are not appropriate for the period of this house. But that, I'm not, once again, it's not about the materials, about the look.
Is there a suggestion that you have pointed in that book that they could look at or take into consideration or should we be pointing them in a better direction as though?
So the vertical elements are perfect. I just think that the cables are, I don't know if they are the best option. So I don't know what, so that's my, that is the only thing I'm offering right now. I don't have an offer of a solution. I think there are some proposals or things that you are offering that might be an option. If, but this is, this is not me. This is one opinion and we are fine.
Yeah, of course. I just wanted to see if you had a.
So I. Something. You had a suggestion, if you had an example of what would be appropriate for the seventies. Because I mean, I think that the one thing that they did have a lot in the seventies, I grew up in a house of that era, is they had horizontal slats and that's really not safe for children because they climb them. So I think that is an issue because a lot of the designs in the seventies had, you know, horizontal cables or horizontal wood elements that, you know, kids climb and there's quite a drop on the.
Personally, representing, you know, with the design, I won't even suggest horizontal cable, even though they're available and believe they do pass codes in most municipalities, I won't even suggest them to people because of that reason, the safety.
There's a pretty big.
The ladder.
What I'm questioning is actually the cable, horizontal or vertical.
Yeah, yeah.
That, that's, so there are tons of things that you are proposing that, you know, that I think might be a better option, that thicker. So, but once again, this is me. So just, you know, have tons of things here, but I, to be honest, I didn't have. Personally, I didn't have enough time to research or look at, you know.
If you're talking about the catalog.
Yeah, so probably, you know, from all of them, this, I don't know, this, this one, I don't know what do you think, or if you. If you have this is because you think these are good for you, like do you like them?
No, this was just said the catalog that comes from.
I dropped off a catalog. It looks like someone else copied the.
Yeah, it's not any suggestion or design. I mean.
No.
It's just everything that this company sells.
Perfect.
So Stephen requested as much information as we could give him, so I figured nothing better than a catalog.
Yep.
And from a design element, those cables almost disappear from the canal view. So the people who might be affected by that, they're, they're going to kind of disappear from a distance.
So the opinion that I'm giving you is not based on what people, it's based on, so for me as. I remember it's a shed.
Yes.
From the nineteen seventies. So, you know, so if I like her noise, it's not, it's not about that or if it's, you know, it's about matching the, of the, the new, the new structure.
I understand. Historical consideration.
Exactly.
And was anyone else, I would motion to accept the application as presented.
A second.
Member McRae?
That, yes.
Member Torres?
Yes.
Member Meneno?
No.
Member Dubravsky?
Hi.
Chair Olson?
Can we make an amendment to his motion? So that. So can we make an amendment to your motion so that we state that TimberTech is only used in in this application and not set in precedent on other applications moving forward and that this is a case by case?
I think you'd use that on findings.
Not only in the finding of facts, but also just from trip out.
Yeah, yeah. So you want to build that into your, or your motion?
I think, I think it's, the findings will be fine and I think, you know, looking for is that this approval is based solely on the facts of this.
Okay, so build that into the findings. Yeah, okay.
Retract the amendment or?
No.
Okay. Let's deal with it.
Keeping it the same.
Okay.
We're waiting.
For the die.
Dan's book is the last one.
And Chair Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Findings of fact, it conforms generally to our guidelines, is not a historically significant feature or feature of the home. I don't, I don't think this is a waiver, but I particularly just wanted to call out, I loved the information provided by the City of Dublin that specifically said approved via waiver for low visibility rear slash side locations. And I, and to your point, the findings of fact, wanted to call out that this was approved particularly because it is not a significant historical feature and that it is a lower visibility modification to the existing historical resource.
Anything else?
And that we've reviewed this on a case-by-case evaluation to issue this specific C of A.
This meaning?
This, this application, yeah. You have a copy of this, Ed? I have a second too. During the day. Thank you very much.
Side bits of information for all of you. If you run into TimberTech again where it is a more historic significance, TimberTech has a four to four, that's a five porter tummy groove that would definitely pass for stained board replacement. They don't have a painted one like the Aridus that was there the night we were here last night. If it's a stained board application, there's all kinds of ones that would work in that instance.
From everything I could tell that their manufacturing process is substantially similar. That's the.
Yeah, and it's very similar.
That differentiates them.
Right.
Please connect with, yeah, you can run that. That would be Booker, we're gonna start.
Yes, our production manager will give you the actual permit, right?
Fantastic.
Yep, and when's he back?
Next week.
Okay, somewhere.
With places unknown.
I'm on a great vacation.
I'll put his GPS on the next round here.
All right, forty-five Monroe Ave. Thanks for coming back.
Maria. Welcome. Hi, guys. Okay, so I sent something out very late today.
You got it.
You got it. So do you have any thoughts on that? That would be leaving. So if you look at that.
Maria, are you up to speed on this one?
Yes.
Do you want to be brought up to speed? You're okay?
I am.
Okay.
They do, hi, so. Yeah. We have the, so what we're trying to do is save this garage. Steve's come out and looked at it and unfortunately for twenty years I took care of it. So it's not, it can be.
Yeah. And everyone received Steve's letter and read through it?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm not the, not the partner in the back.
Right, of course, yeah.
But just this, this portion. Unfortunately, it is a hip roof. So it's very hard to make a hip roof. Put an addition on hip roof and make it look particularly well. So this, so what I came up with is that we could make this a I had to bring, I had to get to this height because I had to get a beam in here to do anything. So I can't go in a shed under this.
Right.
So I have to be at least at that. So if I did this and I just tipped this roof, so this is all one way, tipped that. In order for me to do that, I would basically have to look at the next page or, you know, you'll see a bunch of beams and not just. That one. Anyway, I have to support this garage. In order to do that, I would actually put a structure inside of this, support that existing garage, keep this wall, keep the window, reuse these windows over here, not reuse the back door. And still would like to try and get the two doors as close to one. How is everyone feeling about this?
Yeah, so I think that that design is, I appreciate all the efforts. I think it was, I was the one who said, why not put a little tip off of it, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I walked, I walked by and obviously when you drive by, you always just take a peek over the last two weeks and just.
When you're driving.
Well.
When you're stuck in a trap. Could be there, yes.
And I'm not sure if that's, this is the best route, trying to preserve just that structure and go to this route. What's everyone think about this design? I mean.
My personal opinion is I don't think it looks as good as the tear down and start over. Personally, your two garage of the original standard often that you have looks way better. Looks like it belongs to the house way better. This is awkward just to try to save what is a kind of a non-functional building. That's my personal opinion. I. I agree, but I also enjoyed Dan's idea of reusing the existing windows if possible.
Yeah.
They're still like very good condition. And that for some of the historical aspects of the building and maybe that far wall too. I don't know if you can use that, the south, south wall. I don't, is that structurally sound?
Well. The foundation.
Do you hold things have?
Yeah. Foundation isn't, but like Steve said, I could raise it, I could fortify that foundation some way. But if I'm taking off the roof and I'm taking off.
So it sounds like.
I mean, you can try to save the.
Save the windows.
Or save the siding and the, and the, you know, whatever you can save and recycle it maybe.
Primarily the windows, I think, are the most practical thing to save.
Yeah, the windows are not a problem because they're, I mean, they're a single pane wood window. They don't actually operate. They were a double long, they were double long with it. I mean, it doesn't matter. It's a garage. You can make them and put them in a fixed manner on the outsides of the garage.
Doesn't the support first have to come with findings and support of demolition? Given that this is been determined to be a contributing structure in the last review of the search.
Is that how we normally do it?
Well, yeah, you have to.
That was first. That's what we did on itself.
You have, you know, there has to be findings and support.
I mean, the findings are, Steve basically said it's not usable as a garage. It's usable as a storage shed. Like fucking sort of court style. And so.
My, my, legally, my, my problem would be that it's deemed to be a contributing structure, no matter what it is.
Say that again?
It's, it's deemed to be a contributing structure, no matter what it is.
Right, so that's why we have to make a motion to approve a demolition first?
No, you have to, you have to.
You have a reasonable basis to demolish something.
That's what I'm saying. We do that before we finalize this, this part.
You have, you have to. You're right. You have to come up with plans before you do the demolition, but the demolition, you've got to be able to support with classics.
Yes.
Which is made difficult, I think, by the fact that it's deemed to be a contributing resource.
But it's a, it's supposed to be a garage and it's not functioning as a garage.
Doesn't really matter. It's still a contributing structure.
Contributing as what?
Storage.
I didn't do the study and I qualify, but I do know that it was Steve Lee.
Steve, Steve has analyzed it though as a building that's not usable as a garage.
But he also said that while I cannot say that the existing structure is in a condition that would need to be demolished.
Yeah, if, if it's, it was deemed a contributing structure.
Which is, I think, a problem to get to demolition, but I'm just thinking of the next application, well, somebody wants to change.
I wanted to use this as my new gym. Not big enough for my gym. It was a carriage house, not a garage.
That wasn't a carriage house.
I don't know what it was. I don't know. Nineteen what?
He knows, so. Have we had other projects like this in the village?
Yeah, there has. One on Sutherland was more of a shed. And I don't think that was a contributor.
Down there, similar one part structure, but doesn't fit any car. So they could build a garage and they weren't allowed to. They have to preserve it and they, so basically they've got this well-preserved storage for that. I, I have a similar sized garage that a SUV would not fit in it. I have a Mini too.
Yes, there you go. So that's what I do. I have my mini garage. It's easier when you don't have.
But might as well build. So, I mean, it's structurally sound.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I mean, it seems like we're in a situation where, you know, the bylaws that we have are not going to let us demolish this building because we, we don't, you know, it's deemed a historical building and, you know, it's, it's not, you know, deemed to be something that needs to be demolished and therefore, you know, we're stuck with this plan, which doesn't look as good, but at least, you know, it preserves the existing building. And that just seems like a very bad, sad, weird way to operate. Like if I'm going to build something that's not that person.
Yes.
That doesn't look good just because you're preserving an old wooden building. How can we, how can we like, apply common sense to this situation is my question.
Have a different engineer give us a report.
But can we deem the building not contributing somehow? It's just a one, you know, it's just a four-square wooden building. How do we undem it?
I, I believe that it'd be possible. This, it is, I think, that's part of them. I know it is a wrong way for us to say it, but.
No, no, I mean, it's, I'm stippling here because I really don't like that we painted ourselves into a corner in terms of.
I'm going to go down the road that I don't want to go down like this, at this.
Are there other styles that you could talk to the applicant about?
Does the pitch need to look like that of the roof?
Well, I, there's no way to get a shed, right? There's no, that's what's wrong with a hip roof.
What happens if you keep the, keep the two, the, the front and the side wall? And you get rid of the roof and everything else. You just keep the front and the side wall and everything else is built.
The front wall is just a ding.
Well, you know.
What is the threshold of a demolition?
I don't know, my code book would be.
Yeah, because I mean, she could put a new roof on there.
I already did unfortunately. And I resheded it.
No, but I mean, like.
A new roof. It looks great. As you see all the old framing up there and Steve standing in there and he's like, oh, this really looks good. And I was like, gosh, I shouldn't put that roof on. I should just let it rot. Then it would have been, would have been the wrong, but no.
How much can you replace from a shake before it's a new shake?
Yeah. Because if you, if you can replace the roof. Thing and then we got distracted. You said you were, you had some, a new thought.
I do, but I can't, but if I went with a new thought, that I don't understand. I can't help you here.
She may want to defer her application until later time. That's how she comes up with it. Needs, you see it on the board.
So it's an alteration.
Yeah. If I all.
That one is alteration, alteration.
Oh, okay.
The same thing. The same thing. And it will be. Viewed. Um, under the same. Provisions as any other operation.
Interesting. So functionally even this, this, this alternate proposal that we're presented with. Functionally, because it's removed in the wall, we have to do, do the same ones as demolition.
No, it's an alteration. So you view it like you would view any other alteration to a structure.
So at what point does an alteration become a demolition? If she, if she remain one wall?
There is no, there is no. Difference between an alteration and demolition. They are both. Evaluated under the same criteria.
Okay.
Which are. The alteration to an exterior architectural feature of your building or structure in the village. And any construction, rebuilding, destruction of village show be compatible with the properties in the village. Applying the principles of compatibility. Board shall consider the general design and character proposed alteration. Or construction relative to the existing features of the property. Or improvements surrounding properties, the neighborhood and the village. The massive scale of proposal, the neighborhood context. The scale and visual compatibility of proposed operation. Or construction in relation to property itself, surrounding properties. The neighborhood and the village, texture and materials. And their relation to similar features of the property or other properties of the neighborhood and the village. Uh, visual compatibility with surrounding properties and properties of village. Including proportion of the property's facade. Orion arrangement of windows and other openings within the facade, roof shape. And the rhythm of spacing of properties on the streets in the village, including setbacks. The importance of historical, physical and visual features to the significance of the property. Which is, I think, where we land with the. It being a contributing. Exterior architectural features shall be repaired rather than replaced if possible. And we've dealt with that. Any other factors relevant to proposed operation or construction? Demolition or partial demolition may be permitted only after replacement exterior architectural feature or building or structure has been approved. But. If you're thinking about demolition, it has to be viewed under those. A through I.
Should we need to review this as well?
What?
We'd have to do that ones for this as well.
Right, yeah.
I think it makes me feel like I'm hanging out in a hard place.
You know, it seems like we're just expanding on the existing structure, like it is compatible with the. It is compatible with the neighborhood, it's compatible with the style, it's the same building, but just expand it larger and then we answer fourth and.
I got disagreed, it's not compatible.
That's not acceptable at all.
Right, but that requires.
The, the proposed building would be more with the neighborhood than the existing uh. Or the modified. Original structure. And if we retained aspects of the original structure like the windows and the siding material. Then it would be. Basically, it would just be rebuilding. The existing structure, but just expanding the footprint.
But we still don't have a basis to demolish the existing structure as a contributing factor.
Excuse me?
We, we just don't have a basis to demolish it though. I mean, you know. I can't say that the existing structure is a condition that would need to be demolished.
According to the government, so it could be altered, which is the same thing according to our lawyer.
But maybe the alteration does not consistent with the design of the original resource.
I'm confused. I, I don't see how it's not consistent.
Because that's a demolition. That's a demolition.
And the original.
Not poorly to be existing anymore.
Taking the windows.
Yeah, and they, the woman used to ride the horse around the village.
Yeah, so, so basically the structure is, there's a nineteen oh three and a nineteen fifty.
And I don't think there's any documentation on when this shed was built that. The bond down bit on the back was ever built.
But you know, if you don't, maybe you don't, you get forensic a little bit, so. Anyway, so we just, I just wanted to, to know the periods.
Yes, it was quite a bit different because it, there are. Well, there were. I don't know that there are anymore. There were literally people that remembered. Her riding the horse when we first moved into the. House. People would tell me that the house next door, which is the weird house that sit in the back, that was really weird. That that. Was a rink. And they remembered as children riding. A horse there, horse could be there. So that's, that's where I'm getting them fifties from.
So the, the shape of what you are proposing is exists. So you are not adding a new roof. You're just using the structure that you have and putting to big garage doors.
Make it longer, to make it, the current garage door is only fourteen feet wide.
Yeah, so it's just the, the hip.
Yeah, and so what, what we originally wanted to do is basically make the garage the same as it was. But make it wider. And then in focus that, because what they had to do is they cut out the back wall. Of the shed so that the nose of the car could go through and into the horse shed. Sometime in the when I.
So the two options that we have is to knock down the existing structure and build an almost identical, but wider and deeper structure. So same. Look and architectural style and what's there. But, you know, just a bigger footprint and two garage doors. Or to keep the existing structure and put this. You know. This addition to it, which gives us very odd looking shape. Um, those are the two options. And what's the third option? Oh, okay, so the third option is do nothing.
And I just don't have any basis to approve the first two. Personally, I into this.
Can I, at what's at this point? Can I ask you to not make a decision?
Table?
Table it? Because I came up with a different way that I think would make more sense. But in order for me to do it, it means that I have to make the. Projects slightly larger, which means then I have to go back to get a bigger variance. So I would have and, and. So you can't look at it until I get it through.
You can do an information only. We can just. Table this current proposal right now and just then have another.
Before we do that, motion to table the application.
Wait, but before we do that, is that what you want?
I don't, yeah, not, yes and no.
Yeah, I know.
You know, it's the way it is. I don't, I really don't want to do that.
Yeah.
Because it's on me.
Yeah.
I want to do the first thing, but I don't, I understand that. Giving precedence to tearing down that garage is not what we want to do in the village because we. On Sutherland Street at one point many years ago, which was the parents' house, we allowed them, this is before I was on the board, I was a long time ago. They built a monstrosity garage in the back.
Which house is that for reference?
Yeah, it goes down the hill.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they built a, a big garage, second floor and a whole thing. And everybody asked me, why are you having so much problem with this? They allowed that. I'm like, well, that was a long time. So anyway. I don't, I don't agree with that, but I don't want to do something that isn't, you know, the historic because. Even though I moved out of the village, I still have no.
I want to have the receipts to improve your personal.
Yeah.
I know, I think the first one is probably the best. It's the least amount of. It's the least amount of change.
Visual change.
Visual change. It's the least amount, like if I could do it overnight like that. I could put it back in there and people would be like, it's the same garage. You just, oh, you put two garage doors instead of one.
Yeah.
That, that is, that would be like. That makes the most sense to me.
Yeah.
I understand that you can't come up with a way to take it down and start. I, I.
I don't like that we can't do that because I think there's, there's other people that are in the same boat and I think, you know, in, in some ways. I, I understand that we want to preserve. Especially like houses and things that are really important, but you know, a, a garage that you can just kind of see from the street and. It, it's not a functional building anymore in terms of modern day. I, I live in the opinion that we should allow people to do this. If, as long as what they build in place is similar in style and, you know. That's my personal opinion. I'm not, you know, preserve everything overall this, even though it's like not functional.
I'm wondering, an audience, then you see that, would it be possible? Can you see? Yes, it would be an addition. But then it would not, you know, it will not be so crazy because you're attaching it and maybe is another option. So you have the door here and door here.
So right, so what, so see this is only six foot. So I need this to be bigger.
Yeah, so that would be the variance that, so that's what you're coming up with? Okay, good.
By doing that. Means I have to go back to that. Planning and zoning and I have to pay more fees to go back to them. And I think that is unfair. That portion of that, and it's not my money. It's, it's the homeowner's, it's not my money. But to know, to get to this point and they, they approved it. So now in order for me to go open that back up again. They're saying I have to pay the two hundred or three hundred dollars worth of fees to have initially charged. So what's the fee for this board? So we've paid five hundred and ten dollars. So take off seventy-five dollars and that's how much more I'm going to have to pay again. To have it reviewed again because we came up with a better idea.
Potentially, we'll. I mean, that. I think you can talk to Steve and just say, like, just reopen the existing.
Yes, that's unfair. I don't have any problem. Going next month and the next month and the next month to get it right because getting it right seems to, that's what I would like. I didn't come up with that the first time because I was like, this is the easiest thing would be this. It's the least amount of giving up, the least amount of land. It's taking, it's the least impact on that piece of property. But if there's no way to do it. There are other ways to do it, but they're a little bit bigger.
Right.
So.
I think that you should. Uh, ask Steve or just write a letter directly to the trustee if they have some way of that fee.
Yeah. Just so you want to. Yes.
What you need to.
So can, so, so this idea. That she already has behind the scenes, but this is kind of a pseudo drawing. Can this be? Uh, for this, the board can look at it and so she can move.
Yeah, so I would say.
I have drawn. I've actually literally drawn.
Yeah, but this is the thing. If somehow this board starts to, it, the, the volume itself. If this board says that that is okay. With the volume, the new addition, then maybe. There, she has to come anywhere back.
So I would come here from.
But you could say that we recommended. In an information only session, that you do that third option. Because it preserves the existing building without demolition and it's an addition that makes more sense. You could say that.
I that's, and, and I can, I can, I can do that. My, the whole thing is just the money thing. I just feel like it's a huge money.
In your situation. My turn will be late.
Especially since we're like, act like, yeah, we figure out something.
Yes, can we table this one then?
Sure.
My motion still stands. Second. Remember McGray? Yes, remember Marilla? Yes.
So I would like to approach the board with a information family.
Happy to hear it.
So it looks very similar to what Maria just spoke.
I just, I also just want to make sure you, I hope you understand that no matter what we do, it's. My overarching goal is, is of just my single board member is to do what the applicant wants and work towards that. And I, I just hope you understand that that's what we're trying. The last thing we want to do is. Is have to keep going over and over and over with this application and. I just want to make sure you understand we're not trying to make this any more difficult or hard.
True that. Okay, we'll do this.
Yeah.
Because this is what we do.
So what I did instead was. Here is the existing garage. Here's this existing shed. And what I did here then in this picture is left this. Proud of, instead of going straight across like you said, Maria, I set it back. And said, this is still the garage. We'll put our carriage lights on that. This becomes, it's still there. It's still exactly as it was. And now it's just, I'm going to take this, I'm going to set that. But in order for me to do that, I need to be thirty feet wide instead of twenty-four.
Yeah.
That's where I'm going. But this to me looks more. Doable in the village.
Yeah.
And that by leaving this actually accentuates the fact, and by. Bringing it out proud and letting the other garage sit back a little bit, it actually says this is the old garage. And then here, I wouldn't even, I would put maybe lights in the, you know, in the sofa or something. Because I want this to be, here's my old garage and here's my other garage. Yeah.
Now, does this uh, have you demolishing the old horse situation?
The old horse situation is going to fall down.
That changed the roof line or anything like?
So, uh. Yeah, this, this is a gable. I actually did it as a gable on this, so I can take that then right across the back. Is that what I did? Oh no, I extended this, I extended this roof. So that it went over that. So I extended this, not that you can see it, but the roof that is there will be longer. There's a short ridge up there now.
But like, how do they solve this first one still being used for a car?
Because you, you, I've made it, I made it.
Right here.
I'm going to make it deeper.
Got it.
That's the problem with, it can be one car.
Right, right, right.
As long as it's deeper. So I take the back wall out, the same twelve foot that I'm opening the garage, I'm putting a twelve foot garage door here. And a nine foot garage door here. Again, this wants to be diminutive of this building.
Ridiculous.
Yeah, yeah, I dug it too after I did it.
That's the right way.
That's how we can do this. And then I was like, now I gotta go back. And do the color break.
I don't, I don't think you should have to pay.
This is a moment of clarity over the weekend when you had all the time to yourself?
No, this was after I brought the other one in today and then I was like. I just don't see how we're going to demo that. I mean, the inside of it looks nice and I'm like, well, how am I going to do that? And then I went back, sat down on my computer and started drawing again. I was like, oh, what if we did this? We did this. And then I was like.
You're just basically building another separate garage off the side and extending this one back.
An addition.
And I'm not taking down the other garage.
It worked as an addition.
Yeah. So now I'm going to, I'm going to see you in another month. I just like. So now I'm gonna, so I'm gonna see you in another month, I just like.
Another thing that that makes it possible, you know, in the past, what has happened is. When the the garage is larger than the structure, the house itself, that we had trouble with that. Because people were going, were creating kind of these massive things, but your housing, that happens. Yeah, so it's not going to overshadow.
Yeah, it's gonna be behind the house, that whole thing is gonna be behind the house, the the whole addition there.
Yeah.
I mean, you'll lose some yard because you'll have to put a driveway.
Yeah, but the driveway currently goes that far. It's actually, you can park three cars by.
Right.
So that that doesn't really take any more pavement out of there, it just puts weird look. It really, it really could.
Yeah, that's a good solution.
Do this.
Yeah.
So that's a question back to, as long as we're doing information only, let's talk about what would you think the garage door, I mean, are we good with it? I know originally they wanted a walnut door and I was like. So so we can, so did my husband, men years.
A walnut door?
Yeah.
I mean, I like, I like this door a lot, but painted.
Yeah, and and I said, if he has eyebrows on it, and I said.
Oh, yeah, no, it needs to be square.
That makes stuff, you you know, we don't have stuff. All at the last meeting, she kept looking at me, she's like, right. You know better.
Laurie, I couldn't recognize you that night.
Oh, my gosh. So, yeah, ten years, now I've moved out of the village.
Where are you?
Fair, I'm on Spruce Lane, which is one street outside of the village. Oh, in a little ranch, kind of. Let's, oh, I know the house sucks, but the, it's right next door to my grandson. So he's, we put a door in the sun, he can walk out of his house, he can move over to my house.
Nice.
Floor.
What a life.
We're still in the public meeting.
I'll make it most of them.
Second. I think it's a very creative solution.
Remember McRae?
Oh, we're adjourned.
Remember, let's make you remember Torres?
Yes.
Remember DeRozzi?
I have.
Remember Marilla?
Yes.
You're awesome.
Yeah.
Motion.
Thank you.
All right, guys, I just wanted to thank you for.